Imperial Planning Commission to order, roll call please.
Commissioner Abati? Not present. Commissioner Harvey?
Present.
Commissioner Rivera?
Present.
Chairman Harmness? Hammerness?
Present.
I apologize for the mispronunciation. Vice Chairman Mendoza?
Present.
Okay, Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Harvey, would you please lead us? Ready, begin. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public appearances. Matters, Section B one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission concerning any item within the Commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson, or in this case, the vice-chairperson, and at that time, state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the Commission in writing. Do I have anyone wishing to make comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to B two, of matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission concerning any item within the Commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson, and at that time, state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the Commission in writing. So, I know we have so, we may have some people here that want to speak on agenda items. If you can either speak now, or if you'd like to wait, we can take your comments during the public hearings also. Okay. And moving on to consent agenda, the one item on the agenda is approval of the Planning Commission meeting's minutes of September eighth has been pulled and will be brought back at a future meeting. And so, we're now moving on to Planning Commission's new business. Uh, the first item, D one, is a public hearing for discussion and action for conditional use permit, CUP twenty zero five, to allow for the use and operation of an RV storage at the following address of four oh eight East Second Street in Imperial, APN zero six four, one eight zero, zero zero three. And I now open the public hearing at six thirty-four. And I, we're ready to hear the staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you is a conditional use permit request for an RV storage facility located on four oh eight East Second Street. Um, the applicant is proposing to operate the facility under the name Doons Two Desert Storage, which is a new family-owned business that will provide a ninety thousand square foot lot, RV storage, for those making the trip to the desert. The proposed facility will provide a secure twenty-four seven of street storage option to our local residents and out-of-town visitors. The subject site is Zone I two Rail Serve Industrial that permits many general industrial uses such as building equipment storage, sales and rentals, automobile flip storage, and truck and bus terminals. RV storage facilities are conditionally permitted in this zone. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Equality Act under Section fifteen three oh one of the guidelines. The public hearing scheduled for to, you know, tonight, November tenth, twenty twenty-one, was duly noticed in the Imperial Valley Press on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and a notice of public hearing was sent to all property owners within three hundred feet of the property. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the conditional use permit application to allow for the use and operation of the RV storage facility, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have. And we also have the applicant here present.
Any questions? Did the applicants want to speak to the com- commission?
Good evening, Honorable Commission, thank you very much for your time tonight. First and foremost, I'm a long-term resident of the city of Imperial. Very pleased to have an opportunity to start a, a family-owned business within the city limits and to bring, uh, hopefully some fresh revitalized, uh, growth to that area of the, the city. Being adjacent to the fairgrounds, we all know how important that is to the, not only the city of Imperial, but the community as a whole. We look forward to revitalizing that area, improving the property in that surrounding area, and opening some additional businesses at that site in the future. So unless there's any questions from the commission, I just want to take an opportunity to thank the city staff for working with us. They worked diligently and they were very helpful in the, the whole process, and we're very thankful for that.
Questions from the-
Um, do you guys, the, you guys currently have, um, some debris and some abandoned, uh, vehicles on there? Is that gonna get cleaned up?
Yes, so there is, uh, I believe four vehicles onsite that are gonna be part of the cleanup process when we begin to, to revitalize and, and lay the, um, the Class II base. As well as the, the fencing will be, uh, changed to a privacy fence with slats or similar type material to be able to block the, the lot from public view.
It'll be on the north end of the property, right?
The privacy slats will run through the west, the south, and the east end, and then a wrought iron fence is being constructed for the front of the property to the north-facing side.
All right, can you explain to me the, uh, the surface that you're gonna, that you guys are projecting to put in?
Yes, it'll be graded to spec according to what the engineers' drawings are. Um, initial conversations with the, with the engineers say that it can be graded flat, and then it'll be, uh, fixed or topped with Class II base or recycled asphalt.
Okay, all right, then, sometimes I'll, I'll ask those questions just so that it's, it's out, out in the open.
No problem.
Uh, do you guys currently have any, um, commercial endeavors already looking at? Or is it just right now specifically for RVs?
Right now, it's specifically for RVs. Uh, we do have a planned expansion for the fifty-eight hundred square foot building that's there. That is not part of this, uh, application, that's a, it'll be a future application. It'll be very consistent with the type of use for RV storage and kind of the off-road community in general.
Plan to have cameras onsite, security cameras?
That is a future plan, yes.
The reason I ask, and I'm sure you can relate to this, is, um, there's a concern about, I've, in reading in different RV communities of this type of storage of having homeless, knowing that there's nobody onsite potentially breaking into the campers and setting up house in campers, and I just wanted to see what kind of security there was to, not only for the, you know, the cus- for the customer's purpose, that's, that's on you, but for as far as attracting homeless and potentially trying to use that as housing.
So, living onsite will not be permitted in any of the mobile, uh, devices, whether it be a trailer or an RV parked onsite. Uh, we do have an individual, um, staying at the property on a small, um, building at the back of the, the property that provides oversight twenty-four hours a day and calls with any concerns. And in addition to that, our, our family will be checking the property, minimum of once a day, seven days a week.
I'm not so much concerned about your tenants staying there, I'm more worried about potential homeless breaking in and getting into the campers and hiding in there.
That, that is a concern, that's, we're working towards the gating, um, some electric gates at the front for ease of use for our patrons, but also for security purposes. Then, once we have that electrical pulled, then it'll make it a little bit easier to add the cameras. That is a future plan, but I don't want to commit to the timeline just right now.
When you get approval on the CUP, what do you anticipate your timeline being to, like, truly opening up at this location?
Well, we, we need to have some other, um, work done in terms of, I, I believe the city's gonna require some engineering, um, as far as soil samples, or maybe not soil samples, but topology, and I'd have to defer to the city for that, but there's some, some additional, um, work that needs to be done. Once that's completed, we're ready to, to move forward and begin the process immediately.
Anybody else have questions for the app-
Oh, not on this end.
Mr. Hammerness, did you have any questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
And is there anybody else from the public that had comments or questions? Okay, given that, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Given that, I'll go ahead and, um, close the public hearing at six forty-one. And do I have a motion?
I motion to approve Resolution number PC twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, uh, for a CUP to allow for the use and operation of an RV storage at four oh eight East Second Street in Imperial. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, just 'cause I'm not there. Yeah, the voice don't love.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
All right, um, before we take roll call, I would like the record to reflect, we do have Commissioner Abati onsite, and we'll proceed with roll call. Commissioner Hammerness?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Mendoza?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four zero. Moving on to item D two, thank you. Uh, moving on to item D two, the public hearing for the discussion and action for the zoning code text amendment relating to the development standards for, uh, attached and detached canopies in residential zone. I will go ahead and open the public hearing at six forty-three. And go ahead, we can hear the staff report, please.
I'm sorry. Um, good evening, Commissioners. Um, the item before you is a zoning code text amendment for development standards for attached or detached canopies in residential zones. Um, the residential zone, um, currently has a, um, restriction of, uh, five feet setback for, um, accessory buildings and structures. Um, and as you, um, already know, there's been a lot of, uh, variances, and there's been a lot of, uh, applicants, uh, requesting a modification from these regulations. The amendment to the zoning ordinance is necessary due to the fact that lots are small in residence. Most of the residents are unable to build a decent-sized patio in their backyards. Amendment to zoning ordinance will also streamline the permit processing. Uh, we're recommending an amendment to the zoning, um, to allow these, um, accessory buildings and structures to be at a three-feet-to-an interior side or real lot line. These minor adjustments to the development standards will promote opportunities for efficient use of the residential land and compact development and add flexibility in the regulations that support expected development in the city, and it is in the interest of the community. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section fifteen oh six one subsection B, number three of the guidelines. The public hearing scheduled for tonight, November tenth, twenty twenty-one, was duly noticed in the Imperial Valley Press on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the zoning text amendment in regards to development standards for attached or detached canopies in residential zones, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
I have any questions from the commission?
Yeah, um, where do we originally end up, how do we end up, uh, originally with the five-foot?
Um, I, I do not have that answer. Um, I know it's been in, in our code, um, for quite some years, um, since I was in the city. Uh, I've been with the city for ten years, so at least another ten years. Um, so I, I'm assuming it's a little over twenty years, and we, we haven't been able to change it.
And that's, uh, that seems to be the standard, right, Miss Moore?
Uh, Commissioner Rivera and, and Planning Commission, I, 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 I believe that the five-foot and the setbacks generally have been around for a long time and, and basically, uh, go back to the time when our lot sizes were much different. Uh, a- as we've moved into where we are now with the lot sizes becoming smaller, it's been, it's basically not possible physically to do some of the things that homeowners want to do, uh, uh, with their lots. Uh, and, uh, I, we, we have been using the variance process, uh, whi- which would allow a variance to that, uh, setback. But, uh, 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 as a general rule, that isn't the best way to accomplish that. And so, I, I, staff is recommending this, and I agree with, with staff, that this is the better approach, uh, if indeed you want to allow construction in that, uh, in what used to be a bigger setback. This is the better approach, rather than having to go through each individual one as they come up.
Yeah, I could, I could elaborate a little bit on that if you really stood hearing my collaborations.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that actually goes back to fire code. And the five-foot was from the property line to the wall of the house, 'cause of earlier, when houses were built up until twenty years ago, the eve was two feet. So, that allowed us, and so if each house had two feet, that allowed six feet between the space of each eve. So that five feet actually goes back to the wall of the structure, not the actual eve of the building. But now we're building houses with shorter eves, so therefore, we can allow them to creep closer to the property line and still maintain that six-foot distance from eve to eve. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that's an old, that's a really old fire code thing. And I'm old and know fire code.
Um, do we expect any here-
But yeah, I think that's, I think this is a reasonable change. Um, we might even find that even with that shorting it up, we might still find ourselves having to give variances for closure, because we're just, we're just stacking these houses too close together. But that's another story. I'm done, thank you, Stacy.
Any impending cost or, um, impact to the city?
Um, it all depends how you see it. Um, I, 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 we don't foresee any impact. Um, what we see is it's a cost savings for the residents. Uh, a variance process is around sixteen hundred dollars, um, per app- applicant. And so, that's how we see it, as, as a savings for, in a streamlined process for the residents.
Are there any restrictions for types of materials used for these, um, structures that are gonna essentially be closer?
Yes, so, um, under the building code and the fire code, as, 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 as you get closer and closer to the proper line, you have to, um, um, uh, build it differently. Um, some of them would not be able to be exposed, uh, or the eve needs to be fire-rated. Um, there, there's, there's materials out there that, and people will be able to achieve that with no problems, no issues.
Excellent.
Have any other com- I have anyone, any public comments?
I can see, uh, something that came to mind was, I can see where some of these new homes that have the four thousand square foot lots would, would definitely benefit from this, but there's no, um, like, cutoff or anything, right? As far as, like, say a home with a ten thousand square foot lot, you still want to go and put your, your structure three foot off, and you have all this space where you could essentially keep it off, it's okay, right? It's, there's not gonna be any sort of, um-
Other than that, the lot coverage, there will be no other restrictions?
No, okay.
We have no more comments, then I will go ahead and close this public hearing at six fifty, and I will call for a motion.
Motion approved? Oh, text?
I just clarify, you're making a motion for the, uh, to approve the resolution as recommended in the staff report, or in the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Abati? Chairman Harmness, Hammerness?
Aye.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mendoza?
Yes.
So that motion carries five zero. Item D three is a public hearing for the discussion and action for zoning code text amendment related to restoration of damaged structures, or for restoration of damaged structure for non-conforming uses. And I will open the public hearing at six fifty-two and ask for the staff report, please.
Commissioners, the next item is a zoning code tech, zoning code text amendment for the restoration of damaged structures for non-conforming uses. The purpose of the non-conforming use zoning ordinance is to limit the number and extent of the non-conforming structures by prohe- prohibiting their lo- relocation, alteration, their reas- restablishment after abandonment, or enlargement in a manner that would increase the non-conformity and to prohibit the restoration after destruction. Under our current zoning ordinance, um, if, um, non-conforming building is damaged, um, the structure shall not be restored, except in conformity with the appropriate development standards for the zone in which it is located, and the non-conforming use shall not be resumed. The staff has received numerous requests to amend the zoning code to allow non-conforming uses to continue in case of a fire or other catastrophe. An amendment to the zoning ordinance is necessary due to the fact that property owners, in the process of financing or refinancing the property, no lender is willing to loan the money unless the city will allow to fully rebuild. Therefore, the city is requesting some regulatory relief.
Yeah, Commissioner Body, can you speak into your, into your microphone? Thank you so much.
Okay, I have a question. The question is, for me to understand this, the cor- current code states that if there is a, a structure that was non-conforming to the code and it was damaged by acts of God or by a fire, um, the owner wants to rebuild it, still not to code?
If I can o- offer a little bit of background, this is more common in the case where if you look in on our Imperial Avenue and we have village commercial areas zoned, and we currently have residential homes in those areas. If those homes were to burn down or suffer consequence by act of God, um, they would not be able to come back as residential as it stands right now. That would be a non-conforming use, and they would have to come back as village commercial, a commercial development in essence. So, we're looking for a zoning text amendment that would allow for that consideration in those circumstance, um, should the residents be able to build back their home rather than move to the conforming use, which would be a commercial development? This would allow them to do that in that consideration.
Therefore, this language is only addressing the current situation where houses are located in an area that has been zoned for another purpose. Okay, it's only for that, it's not for someone who built something in their residential area that was not conforming, and it was destroyed by a fire, and they're, they're gonna have leave to rebuild a non-conforming structure.
Correct, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so specific.
Right, so I understand that correctly. We're not gonna punish somebody whose home is still a residence simply because their residence is now in a different zone.
Correct.
Right, they can still rebuild it, but when they sell it, at that point in time, it has to be turned into a small business, something that can conform with the current zone, correct?
No, no, it, 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 it will stay the same. So it, this is only, it only talks about the restoration of the damaged structure. So if it's, it's only for residential and multifamily, so if it's destroyed more than fifty percent, under our current ordinance, he would not be able to rebuild, um, his home.
Right, but on this change, they'll be able to rebuild it.
Be able to rebuild it, correct.
But, when they sell it down the road, it can't be sold again as residential, correct? Because it's no longer in the residential zone. Right? Because we have homes right now, if the person wants to sell them, they can't sell them as a residence because it's now in, in commerce, or village commercial, right? Correct, Alex? Correct? Like the beauty salon and the couple others that are over there.
Okay.
Yes, correct, that is correct, Commissioner. I was just verifying the zoning code specifically, that is correct. If, if the use is changing with the sale of a residence, yes.
Wait, wait, wait.
Because they get to rebuild their house and continue living in it for twenty years. When they sell it again, it's gotta conform, it, it's gotta become a business, it can't be a residence anymore.
A change in ownership.
Okay, so what triggers that?
At the point in time of change ownership.
Um, I have a question. You, you mentioned change in use versus change in ownership. So change in ownership will trigger, so if a, a person who has a home there and sells it to another person who wants to live there as a home, as a residence, their, their, the owner's current ability is restricted as far as options of, to sell their property? That doesn't make sense. That's like a taking without compensation.
I'm looking to our city attorney for some clarification on this specific.
So, um, I was looking up a few matters in our municipal code. There are different factors, um, that, that could occur that would require, um, the, the use to become conforming. I do not believe that a change in ownership affects the ability to continue a non-conforming use by itself. There, there are other issues, this is one issue that we're addressing tonight, which is destruction of property. There's, uh, certain time periods where you discontinue the non-conforming use for a period of time, and then you lose the right to continue that non-conforming use. But as to the question of, does a change of ownership impact, uh, the ability to continue a non-conforming use, um, I do not believe that has an impact.
I understand.
It would just seem to me it'd be a form of taking without compensation. Just by changing the code, you take away a person's, um, right, value, capital? Okay, yeah, that's just illogical.
That certainly is an issue that can come up, uh, Commissioner Body. Uh, the, the idea of the non-conforming use is to try to strike a balance between, uh, the situation where you have an existing structure and/or an existing use, and then the permitted use of that area changes. If, if the city were to come and say, you now have to comply now, indeed, that, uh, that could arise. Uh, and you see, uh, when, when entities do that, uh, that there are challenges based on, uh, the fact that the regulation, uh, works a taking uh, a- as you indicate. So, basically, one of, uh, aside from burning down, the other thing that the ordinance provides for is a process whereby, could, because the whole idea of non-conforming use is to try to strike a balance in between the use you've had for a long time and wanting to, as a policy- and wanting to, as a policy matter, change the use in the area. And so there's a process in the ordinance by which the city could go to the property owner and say, because of your investment and and the rest, we're gonna amortize that value and so you have to terminate that use after X period of time, usually measured in years. And so that is that is the other way. Aside from being destroyed, the other way that the city could accomplish its policy goals to change to uh to change the use would be to say to so- uh say to somebody, you have to, you you can continue this use, but you have to discontinue it after ten years, fifteen years, something like that.
That's the current.
The city, to my knowledge, has never engaged in that exercise. Uh, uh, but but it it is theoretically doable under our ordinance.
That's the same. Same thing as camp land up there where it took many, many years. They had a ninety nine year lease. The people who were living in RV, not even RV, trailers, right there at the bay.
Old Deanzakove camp land has taken on a life of its own.
Right, right, right.
I I'm not, I'm not familiar with all of the circumstances, but but that's that's the argument.
Yeah, but there's not a current polit- there's not a current practice by the city.
In the city of Imperial?
Yeah, city of Imperial.
Well, if by practice you mean have we ever done it, the answer is correct. We have never engaged in in that.
Doesn't mean it won't happen.
And and that's in in the Deanzakove camp land, one one factor that is at play there that isn't here is that I think the city was somehow somehow owned it and there was a long-term lease and the lease was coming to an end. So that isn't the case here. Here, the it's the property owner and you had and they had an uh pre-existing use.
Right, so the point is merely to allow them to uh rebuild so they can get financing and uh stay in the same status quo as far as residential, if that's what the current use is.
I I think the other circumstance that came up is that you had a situation where somebody wanted to sell. If you you had an interested buyer, the buyer says to their insurance company, hey, I'm gonna buy this house and the insurer says, okay, so if the house burns down, you're expecting us, the insurance company, to pay to rebuild it. But whoa, the city is gonna tell us you can't do that. So we don't want to sell you an insurance policy that that we won't be in a position to honor. So that 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 tees up up the problem that I I think this amendment would address. It 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 would allow people to continue uh that their non-conforming use.
Essentially, it's like a housekeeping matter here.
Um, yeah, I I would say it's a little, it's more than housekeeping because indeed it it sets up a situation that we n- now don't have. Now, if you have a residence and 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 you're and uh and the example that that um Ms. Brown just referred to, you have a village commercial zone right across from City Hall and you have a single-family residence. As we as we sit here today, if that single-family residence burns down, our ordinance would say that, and when I say burns down, it's more than fifty percent of the assessed value to replace and all those things. But if it essentially burns down, the city would say you cannot resume that structure and that use. Now, you you mentioned there is a difference between a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming use because if you, as you can see on Imperial Avenue, you have some structures that kind of look like houses, but they're engaging in a commercial use. And and so uh we would say those comply. So you can get into that conundrum, if you will, with structures versus uses. But this amendment would 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 address that situation where you have a homeowner whose house burns down uh and as we sit here right now, they could not replace that house.
I make a an assumption that if it were to burn down and they were allowed to rebuild it, if the house was non-conforming to building code, they would not be able to build it in the same way. They'd have to bring it up to code? Okay.
Yes, I I believe that's the case, that, yeah. I mean, if you have a house that's built in the forties, we're not gonna say build it.
Do we have any uh comments from the public?
Yeah, good evening. My name's Ken Jackson. My wife Kimberly and I are uh in town to specifically address this. Our originally, our challenge was uh we bought that home from an uh it's kind of a funny story. I'm at a Starbucks in Newport Beach and I'm wearing a suit and this older gentleman calls me a city slicker. And I said, I'm more of a country boy than you can imagine. He goes, yeah, what country? And I said, look, if you can show me the Imperial Valley on a map of California, I'll buy your coffee. He put it himself. It says Imperial High School, class of fifty-five. So that started a friendship. His mother passed away and we bought the house that's right across from City Hall uh for my mom. My dad had passed away a few years before. He was the longtime pastor at Imperial Community Church. And uh so we just, we bought the house, we fixed it up for mom and uh she lived out in her last days. And uh we let her caregivers continue to live there for a while. And then we put it on the market this spring and we had lots of interest because it's a really cute house. Uh, only to find out that if you're getting a loan, uh insurance companies aren't gonna touch that. I had a little issue with the grammar of the original paragraph because destruction is never fifty percent. Destruction's absolute. Uh, but that's because my sister taught English at Imperial High School for many years. But bottom line, I worked with Othon to say, look, you're prohibiting is it is a conforming use. It's a non-con- I'm sorry. The house itself is per existing code. There's nothing that would need to be dealt with if it burned down. It would have to be brought up to all the modern code. But the use is still allowed as a single family. So all we're asking is allow it to be language that if for any reason there was a tr- uh a tragic accident and it burned down, they could at least rebuild what they have. Your Imperial, your community district was put in place at a time when the city had eminent domain capabilities. That's no longer there. So the best resource you have for continued redevelopment in your area is market conditions. And I think that's your best bet to see how properties will turn over and become something else is to let the market dictate it. And if at some point uh somebody said, hey, um, there's a law firm that would like to be across from City Hall and they want to do that, you have a change of use, you have your opportunity at that time. But for the use to stay what it historically has been forever, uh that's all we're asking is an insurance provision that allows it to be rebuilt as a single-family home in exactly the same location that it is all per the new codes. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Jackson, if I could, I just want to say that I, all these years later, I still miss your dad. I don't miss the handshakes. I have to admit that because those could put you on your knees in an instant. Do I have any other comments from the commission?
Oh, not on this end.
Okay, uh, we'll close the public hearing at seven oh nine. And do I have a motion?
I I move that we adopt the resolution dash fifty.
As presented?
As presented.
I'll second. Can I have a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
Chairman Hammerness?
Yes.
Commissioner Abati? Vice Chairman Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Moving on to reports and do we have anything from our commissioners? I will start with Ms. Abati. Anything to add? Mr. Rivera?
No, not this time. I forgot my list.
Mr. Hammerness, did you have any comments or reports?
Uh, no report, but I would like to comment on, we're supposed to have a meeting in two weeks, which would be the day before Thanksgiving. Uh, just wondering if we're going to try to do that or not. Because it is the day before Thanksgiving and some of us might not be here. I wonder the city had to say about that.
At at this time, we do not have anything scheduled for that agenda. Um, so we would be posting a a planning commission cancellation potentially.
Well, I would like potentially put up that we don't have a meeting period.
Can we adjourn it to the first meeting in December?
Yes, you could.
What is the date of that?
December eighth.
Do I have to have a motion for that?
Yes.
Pushing it off two weeks? We're pushing it off to the first meeting in December. We won't have, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn today's meeting to December eighth with no meeting on November seventeen?
I so move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
And do we need to take a roll call vote on that? I need a roll call vote then. Alright, roll call. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerness?
Yes.
Commissioner Abati? Chair uh Vice Chairman Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And as far as myself, I just wanted to say uh I was a wasn't able to attend this last meeting of the Friends Foundation. I actually did leave my other meeting and with the intent of going, but I didn't get that second email changing it to Los Cabos, so I was wandering by myself around burgers and beer trying to find you guys. I just figured you guys were already done by the time I got there because I was late. Um, so if I could find out when the next meeting is?
Absolutely. The next meeting will be November eighteenth. So next Thursday.
And I did I have that date right? I didn't have that date right, did I? Whenever I said we were adjourning it, we were adjourning it from the twenty-fifth to December. Now that I think about that, I said November seventeenth.
We're, yes, we're, we're, yes, adjourn- adjourning it from the twenty-fourth to December eighth.
So it's on the eighteenth?
Yes, the next Friends of Parks meeting is on the eighteenth.
Okay, yes. And do we have any staff reports?
Uh, nothing for me. Commissioners, have a great Thanksgiving.
Nothing for me.
Nothing to report.
No report.
That being said, I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven thirteen.
Alright, good job.